Good morning, everyone, and welcome to City Council Study Hall Session. Today, we have a couple of presentations, which Mr. Burr is going to put that up on the screen because I didn't bring my agenda down here with me. We'll be doing the Community Housing and Human Service Update, and the Fourth Quarter Reports, and then discussion on the Mayor's recent emergency declaration. I will let you all decide who wants to go first this morning, since it's both in the same area.
Good morning, Council President, City Council Members. We appreciate this time that you've set aside for us to go over the fourth quarter quarterly performance reviews of our homeless services. I think the benefit of setting aside a designated time is that fourth quarter really gives us that year snapshot of how projects are doing. And as we move through this presentation, we're going to see some projects that are certainly struggling. I think the next question from there is, now what? And what I will say is that the RFP committees, both from CHHS and the COC, those respective RFP committees, are already teed up to look at the same data and make some decisions from there. Likewise, city staff are also doing the same thing. And so, we do anticipate, as we have said in the past, that this really is an opportunity, looking at the data to see what projects are really succeeding, and that we've got good community feedback, which means folks are accessing it, and we're seeing success. And so, if there's an opportunity to move funding into those projects, and more fully fund those types of projects that are succeeding, then that is what we should do. So, again, that's the whole point of data, is to be able to inform us, and then make those policy decisions moving forward. So, my hope is that, I know it's a lot to digest, this will be available on the CHHS website, but if you have questions, as Amanda is going through, please ask. And then likewise, for the public, also, always feel free to email and inquire, because sometimes the data is not, I mean, it's good, but sometimes it's not easily understood of what it is that we're trying to show. So, we're always available to help and walk alongside folks. So, without much more discussion from me, I'll hand it off to Amanda, and we'll carry on.
Good morning, thank you, Ariel. Okay. So, very first, our Q4 is cumulative, so it's 7-1 of 24 to 6-30 of 25. And this does include all programs, both in the HHOS RFP, the fiscal year '25 homeless services RFP, the eviction prevention, and then all of the pilot programs, like the scattered sites and the Housing Navigation Center. Overall, we serve 10,000 clients, almost 11,000 clients, and we spent over $21 million, and 24.5 had been awarded. Diversion is the first program that we will look at, and it sort of focuses on making sure that households do not go into the traditional homeless system. And overall, within this intervention, we served 759 clients, and were able to exit of those 478, almost 68%, into permanent housing. And only 11% came back. Now, in each of the slides, we will have the individuals or household served, depending on the program, and the metrics that they're being held to, according to the five-year plan. Now, for these programs, it would have been the 2020 to 2025 five-year plan, the ones that you'll see next quarter will be on the new five-year plan, the 2025 to 2030.
Sorry, on the previous slide, so it says they have to literally be homeless or at risk. So, what percentage of the 478 were actually homeless? What percentage were at risk? And what does it mean, if they're at risk, to go into permanent housing? Does that just mean they went from one unit to another because they were getting evicted from one, or couldn't sustain one? How does that work?
So, yes, we can absolutely peel back that data to show which ones were literal, which ones were imminent. Imminent risk, usually it just means that you're still housed, and either you've lost a job, or there's something, some barrier that had occurred that is going to put into jeopardy your current housing situation. What was the second part of that?
Well, I mean, it says literally, exit to permanent housing. So, what are they exiting from, and where are they going to, if they weren't already in permanent housing?
Sure. Right, so it depends on the initial housing status of that individual when they entered the system. So, if they're literally homeless, then that means that they're in shelter, or they're in their car, and then from there, going into a permanent housing destination. If they were at imminent risk, then it's them going to either, one, that they were able to stabilize in the unit that they were at, or that maybe they did go to a different unit. It just, it depends on what that household was facing.
Sure. Well, I think that would be good data to have, because we're talking about prevention rather than an exit, and I think differentiating between prevention and exit would be important. And then also, returns, I assume would reference exiting, so how many fell into homelessness despite the prevention efforts? I think that's how the data should be parsed.
Correct. Yep, and that return is a two-year look back, and Amanda can kind of give a little bit more clarity on that. But what I will say is that in these diversion programs, there is no rental assistance that is allowed, which makes it somewhat challenging. We're actually in kind of deeper community conversations right now about that, and how we might be able to better assist households that come through that diversion pipeline, also recognizing that we don't want to duplicate those prevention funds that are out in our community. But somebody that presents as literally homeless, I think this is a great example, if you're in a diversion pipeline, those are historically people that will score pretty low on the SALA, that assessment tool that we use. And right now, there is no formalized way to attach rental assistance to that household, when oftentimes, that is all that they need. They just need that light, kind of shallow subsidy. And so, we're trying to sort out a way at CHHS to see, is there a way that we can make that pathway possible?
Do we also, if all they need is rental assistance, for example? Do we also sort of ask the next question, which is why? And if it's employment, are we connecting them to employment? I mean, is that like a priority?
Absolutely, yes. So, that's all part of the Housing Stability Plan that every client file requires. Yeah, I mean, you can't do adequate case management if you don't understand the why. And I think more than that is that, look, we can't just put Band-Aids on something. So, if rent, if employment is part of that, okay, well, then we got to find you a job that, either it's maybe you're underemployed, or maybe you did lose your employment. Otherwise, if we don't fix that, then you're going to end up coming back several times.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I'll just make an additional comment on that. One thing that might be helpful for other council members, and we can find a way to distribute this, is what the applications themselves look like, because I think that some of the questions that are coming up on that are answered through the individual application process, going on the Family Promise. Website was very educational for me to see what those kinds of different indicators are when you're applying.
Thank you, go ahead.
We will follow the same theme throughout, which is we'll look at the overview of the program, and then we'll go into each of the programs. So, this is SNAP's diversion for singles. They served 147 of those clients that we'd seen earlier, and 42 of them went into permanent housing. And the returns to homelessness, this is a metric we use throughout, it looks at if somebody went to permanent housing, left the program to permanent housing, did they come back within two years? So, the exits that are happening right now, we can't necessarily look at. We're looking at exits that happened two years ago in this program, and seeing if they returned since then. So, you kind of have to take your reporting timeline and scooch it back two years.
And how, sorry, can I ask?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
How are these, and if you could just maybe explain as we go, how are these individuals sourced to this program? How do they find and identify these 120 individuals?
So, in this particular instance, it would be those individuals that would be coming in either by way of walk-in, soft or warm handoffs from other agencies. Again, the biggest thing is for folks who are scoring lower on that assessment tool, not always, but it certainly is a good indicator as to what path you're going to take, whether it's through diversion or coordinated entry. That will kind of help inform what pathway folks are going to go. So, a lot of times, you don't need to do the SALA, if you've been doing this, and you're kind of seasoned in what you're doing, a 10-minute, 15-minute conversation with an individual, you're going to know pretty quickly whether or not somebody is going to score within a range where they're going to be pulled through coordinated entry. So, does that help?
Yeah, I guess just trying to understand, I mean, they're not, so these are not necessarily housing-ready individuals when they enter the program?
Not necessarily. I actually would say that through diversion, those are, again, they don't come with a lot of barriers, and so, those are folks that are going to get, probably be able to find housing pretty quickly. The only significant barrier, again, is that lack of subsidy that is attached to diversion right now. Our hope is to change that.
And it's men and women?
What is it?
Men and women.
Correct, yes, yep.
Councilmember Lambden. And then I'm going to really ask that we let them get through, because I don't want to run out of time, so.
I'm going to have to leave early, so we'll have to have another meeting or something.
Great, Councilmember Lambden.
Yeah, just real quick, I think all of the programs, and Ariel, you made the point at the beginning around how this data can help us inform policy, and I think with looking at the fact that the policy we would be creating is directing funding to these different programs, one thing that would be helpful for me to see, at least, on each of these is how much was put into each of these individual programs versus the outcomes, so that we can kind of look at that return on investment, essentially, of these different programs. And then, the other piece of that, too, I think, would be, because some of these are programs that happen on the state and national level, if there's like a comparison, so we can see how Spokane's doing compared to other municipalities.
Yeah, totally fair, can do.
Any questions on SNAP? Okay. So, this is the Catholic Charities Families Diversion. Here, we're looking at individuals served as well, and they served 612, and put 75% of them basically into permanent housing. Now, I will say, if the metric was close, like in this, in some cases, if it was like 83%, and the metric was 84%, we did consider it achieved, because these are people, right? It's not always so simple to get that whole number on percentages, so if they were within a 5% range, we considered the metric achieved. Now, this is coordinated entry, so the gateway through which people come in, this is when they do that SALA assessment. We had 3,000 households come through, and all of those households, once they're in the priority pool, once an opening comes up, then a referral is placed. So, those metrics, look at the length of time it takes from when you did the original assessment, to when you got a positive result. And so, on average, that's been 28 days, and we had about 41% of all of those referrals actually end up being successful.
Can I ask you for clarity, households or people? So, just help me understand that.
Yes, so households, there's more than one person in there. Individuals, there's only one person in the household. That's really the main difference. And this is the HFCA, or the Homeless Families Coordinated Assessment. They did meet, like this is one example, right? It was 48%, and the metric was 50%, so we considered it achieved. And they are also meeting the metric of 23 days, making sure that it takes about 30 days from the time the assessment was happened to when we have some kind of successful referral. Now, this is our single system, so this looks at adults that are not parenting. No one in the household is parenting either, versus the families, someone in the household is parenting. We had about 41.24 successful referrals, actually, that's wrong, I think it's 34.32, we will fix that. They did meet the metric of keeping it within that 30 days to get a successful referral. Now, this is our homeless prevention, so these are the ones that are in a unit, and they're facing evictions. And rental assistance, like the rental subsidies that Ariel mentioned, are attached to these programs, unlike diversion. We had 734 households served, and overall, the program did very well, because this is keeping people in the housing that they're already in. This one, we're still working out some data on the end of the program. Once we have it, we will share it. Now, the Family Promise Eviction Prevention Program, they served 115 clients, and at the end of that, 78 of those went into permanent housing, or retained their permanent housing at the end. We had a very, very low return rate on this one as well. Now, this was Nuestras Raíces, their Esperanza Program. They served 57 households, and they did meet both of the metric by keeping 26 of those households in permanent housing at the end. Now, this is the Families Eviction Prevention. Now, you'll notice on the returns to homelessness, I don't count this as a metric for them, because this program began in January, and so, there is no timeline for us to shift back. So, it's really not fair to hold that metric against them. So, they did achieve 100% of their metrics, and every single household that they served did exit to permanent housing. Now, this is a SNAP program, they served both singles and families in this one, so it was a combination, 176 households, and again, all of them retained their permanent housing at the end. This was a transitions program, but just for singles, there was no families in this one, and again, they did very well. Everyone that they served exited to permanent housing at the end. This was again, Nuestras Raíces, so they had two, they had the eviction prevention, and then they had an award under HHOS. And in this one, a lot of the clients are still in the program as it's continuing past, so there have been no exits yet, for us to tell. Now, this is the HEN program, the HP portion of HEN. They served 147 clients, and 54 of those were in permanent housing at the end. We did have four returns, but that is below our target maximum.
Can I add something really quick? So, I do also want to say that even if somebody is exited into, whether it's sheltered or unsheltered homelessness, that does not necessarily mean that that's a negative, right? So, oftentimes, what happens is that that case manager is trying to avoid an eviction, right? So, sometimes folks come to providers, and there is no maintaining in your home, but rather, how do we make sure that you're not getting an eviction, or a poor referral, or whatever it is, from the landlord, so that we can then work on, once you get restabilized, work on getting you into a new unit? Now, I say that without having the quantifying data, but I can tell you from my own experience that that oftentimes is what's happening on the front line, too. So, I do just want folks to keep that in mind.
Now, HEN has a complement program to it, which is the Foundational Community Supports Bridge Program, or the FCS Bridge. And this served 14 clients, and of those 14, four exited, and it was exits to permanent housing, but the program, again, has not been in operations for two years, for us to shift back two years. Now, we're looking at street outreach. So, these were the contracts that were eventually de-obligated, and those funds were recompeted. With street outreach, the successful exits, it's not just permanent housing, it could also be some temporary or institutional, or even getting somebody off the streets into shelter could also be counted as successful for street outreach.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kekhart.
Why change the data? I mean, why is it an exit for one different than an exit for another? Why don't we keep the same definition of exit for all programs?
Of a successful exit?
Because when we say exit, I think we should all be talking about the same thing, which in my mind is exiting homelessness. That's exiting. And so, why do we say this is just getting into a shelter, but something else is exiting to permanent housing?
Well, I guess I would say that it depends on the project, right? So, if we're looking at rapid rehousing, it is not a successful exit to take somebody from rapid into emergency shelter, necessarily, right? But somebody that is street homeless, and exiting them into a mercy shelter, that is a positive outcome. So, it is dependent on the project itself, and what is the overall goal or mission of that project?
Well, and I'm not questioning whether something might be positive or not, I mean, we might have a different opinion on that, but for me, it's just about the language that we're using. If you're going to refer to exits on one program, and it means an exit to permanent housing, we should not use the same term exit for another program, and have that mean a different kind of outcome. When we say exit, we should be saying, meaning exit. That's my point.
Sure.
Let's not change definitions.
That's not how our Performance Management Plan reads, so if you look at the Performance Management Plan, it very much is dependent on the type of project, and then the ensuing exits, and the exit types, so.
I'll leave it here, I won't interrupt anymore. But I'll just say, oftentimes, I vote against a lot of these things, because I don't see it being a path to exiting homelessness, and to me, that's where fundamentally, we should be focusing all of our efforts.
Councilmember Lambden. I'm sorry, Councilmember Lambden.
I'm just curious if a lot of those definitions are set from whatever the state or federal agency is that's operating the requirements for those programs, so like HUD, for example, setting those definitions?
Yes, it's a combination of things, and also, we don't want to compare like a street outreach program to a permanent housing program, or a permanent supportive housing program, right? Ultimately, they have very different goals. Now, exit in HMIS just means you're no longer in that program. If you remember the LSA, remember how we had that sort of big system map? That was sort of the end result as you moved through the program. When we talk about these exits, it's just where were you, and how did you move from the beginning to the end of your journey in this program? Metrics are defined, we do have metrics, system performance measures, I know sometimes we use the same terms, but we do have system performance measures from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, that every single C across the nation has to meet. Our Performance Management Plan does borrow some of those, but COCs locally do have the option to make their own custom metrics and set their own benchmarks. We do ultimately want to make sure we're improving, and don't want to be falling too far behind the national average, but there is some leniency for the COCs to set their own goals. And this was the Salvation Army Street Outreach Program. Now, the average time to date of engagement, this is just saying from the very first time that I saw you, to the time that we actually managed to sit down, get an assessment, and get a case plan together. That's that length of time. So, it took an average of three days, our maximum target, it's about 60, and then serving those with long lengths of homelessness, that's just how long has the client been homeless, and how many of them have been homeless for long enough that it's almost considered chronically homeless, or is chronically homeless. And this is the Women's Hertz Street Outreach Program. Now, this one, unless I'm wrong, is still being funded, I believe? Yes. So, this one is still in operation at this time, and they did exit 15 people to successful destinations at the end of the program. Now, we're looking at night-by-night emergency shelters. 3,000 clients over the course of a year, and they did meet three out of their four metrics. Now, something that is really interesting that's going to come up, is that in the past, we've only considered permanent housing as something, as sort of a successful outcome for our program. Now, in the new Performance Management Plan, we are going to consider some temporary settings, and some institutional as well. Like if the client went to a temporary program, or started staying temporarily with some friends and family, that will also be included as something successful, because they're no longer in, but that will be next set of QPRs that you'll see before you. Now, this is the House of Charity. They did exit 16 clients at the end of it, to permanent housing at the end of the whole year. They were slightly above the returns to homelessness metric. And this was the Housing Navigation Center. That was part of scattered sites. Now, this one, because it was not in activation for two years. Now, this one, because it was not in activation for two years, as I said, no multiple, on multiple occasions, we don't have returns to homelessness. So, out of the three metrics that they have, they did achieve them. Now, this was CAT or Community Advocacy and Treatments Recovery Options Center. They did meet all of their metrics and they served 45 individuals throughout the length of the program.
Councilmember Dylan has a question for you.
Just really quickly, I apologize if I missed this. What is the up-to-date that this data is reflecting? Like how recent?
6/30 of 25.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
And this was the Women's Shelter under Jules Helping Hands, another one of the scattered sites. They did also meet all of their metrics on this one and served 117 individuals. And this was the Churches Shelter. So, this is two, this is where they have the 60 beds. Served 594 individuals and on average, people were staying about 42 days within the shelter. That's what that average length of time homeless means. Now, this is the Truth Ministries Shelter. It served about 557 individuals and clients were staying on average about 25 days. That was basically their enrollment length in the shelter. Now, this was the Scattered Site under Family Promise. This were the additional beds as part of the Scattered Site RFP and it served 25 clients and 10 of those went to permanent housing. So, almost 60%. Now, this was the Open Doors Shelter and it served 291 clients and 110 of those did go to permanent housing at the end of it. They did meet all of their metrics. Now, this was the Flash Shelter. Served 112 clients and 48 of them did go into permanent housing and they spent about 119 days in the program. Now, this is the Young Adult Shelter. 248 youth and young adults served, so this is 18 to 24. And 20 of them went to permanent housing at the end and four did come back. This is one where we do have the returns to homelessness and four of them did come back for about a 30% return rate. This is the Hope House Shelter. Served 481 clients and 64 of them did go into permanent housing with a 22% return rate. Now, we're looking at our continuous stay. So, in the continuous stay compared to the night by night, once you're staying in a bed, it's yours. You don't need to come back to the door every night. The bed is yours for the length of time in the program unless you, you know, violate some rules or absent for several days. It depends on the program. They have served 680 clients and 151 of those did go to permanent housing at the end.
Can I interrupt? On the continuous stay, give me an example of a location or program that's considered continuous stay.
The Way Out Shelter, although they have emergency shelter and transitional housing, but the Way Out is one of them.
Thank you.
278 clients were served in the Way Out Shelter and 18 of them went to permanent housing at the end. We also have Crosswalk. That's another one of the continuous stay shelters. 25 of the clients exited to permanent housing and 113 of them were served. Now, this is kiddos, I believe, 13 and then once they get 18, it's in the YASH Shelter or the Young Adult Shelter. This was the Medical Respite Program under Jules Helping Hands, so 113 clients served, seven of them to permanent housing. Their average utilization was 62% at the end of it. Now, this is the Domestic Violence Shelter with the YWCA. 215 clients served and 51% of them did go to permanent housing. Now, they have a return rate that's a little bit higher of 70%, but considering the demographic, we have to take that into account when you're looking at returns in a domestic violence program.
Excuse me, in that metric, is that male and female or just female?
Can be both. It's both. Now, this is our Transitional Housing Program. So, this is pre-identified units. They're usually there for one to two years. We served 212 clients and 94 of those did exit the program into positive destinations or permanent housing destinations. In this more intensive case management, we also look at increase of their employment and non-employment cash income. So, non-employment cash income would be like SSI or something like that. So, all of that, we do look to see how many of those adults and head of households are also increasing their income while they're in the program. This is the Transitional Housing section of the Way Out Shelter. So, of the 136 clients that participated in their Transitional Housing Project, 56 of them went to permanent housing destinations and 28% of them had, sorry, 28 of them had an increase in their income at the end of their participation in the program. This is the St. Margaret's Program under Catholic Charities and this is Families. So, 49 households and then 32 of those households went to permanent housing. And we had a 45%, almost 46% increase in all of the adults and head of households in their income overall with a 75% average rate of utilization. Now, this is Alex's House. This is for pregnant and parenting youth. Four households served with two exits at the end of it. This was the Miriam's House Program under Transitions. So, 12 individuals served and four of them did go to permanent housing at the end and then three of those did increase their permanent, did increase their income by the time they left the program. And we only had one return for this program. Now, this is a Transitional Living Center, also under Transitions. Served 11 clients and then when the exits happened of the three, two of them went to permanent housing, but we had no returns. And 60% of all of the participating increased their income. Now, this looks at rapid rehousing. So, this is short and medium-term rental assistance for units out in the market. So, it served 357 households and 115 of them went to permanent housing at the end of it. We also look at employment and non-employment clash, cash income growth in this as well as the average time that it took from when the client began to participate in the program to when they moved into the housing. So, when clients go into coordinated entry, they do the assessment, they're placed in the prioritization pool. Once they're pulled from coordinated entry, their enrollment begins in rapid rehousing, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're staying in a unit. It takes some time for them to find a unit and move into it. So, that's what that metric is saying, is how long it took between when they were pulled off of the list to them moving into a permanent unit. And it's about 111 days overall. This is the Emergency Solutions Grant Families Rapid Rehousing Program under Catholic Charities. Served 18 households and 14 of them that left the program at the end, all went to permanent housing. And this is a complement to the ESG program as it has a match requirement. It's under HSG and it served 25 clients with 17 of those exiting to permanent housing at the end and 29% of participants having increased their income at the end. And a very low return rate as well. This is a Singles Rapid Rehousing. So, again, adults that are not parenting. 48 clients served and 32 of them exited to permanent housing at the end. Now, this was the Revive Rapid Rehousing. I believe this came under the Fiscal Year 25 RFP. Served 40 clients and 11 of those went to permanent housing at the end. We don't have returns for this metric though because it was a fairly recent program. So, this is the Rapid Complement to the HP portion of HEN. And it had 224 clients that were served and 41 of them went into permanent housing, but 64 of them, 64% of them did increase their income. This was the Foundational Community Supports Bridge Program, the same complement that I discussed earlier, but on the rapid portion, it only served two clients. We had one exit that was not to permanent housing. Now, we're looking at permanent supportive housing. So, these are pre-identified units with housing choice vouchers and subsidy with case management. Here, you'll see two income measurements. One is employment and income increase for those who are staying in the program and those who are leaving the program. So, for those who are staying, we look at the very first time that we saw what their income amount was and then compare it to the most recent annual record that we have of what their income was. So, we do want clients to continue to increase their income while they're in the program. And then for the other one, we look at when they started the program and then when they left the program. 298 clients served and 257 of them maintained or exited to permanent housing, which means they didn't get like kicked out of the program. They were managing to stay permanently housed in the program with a low return rate of 3.7% as well. This is the Integrated Case Management Program under Catholic Charities. It didn't meet all of its metrics with 600, sorry, 62 clients served. Now, this is the ICM Program for Chronically Homeless Families. So, it served eight households and all of those households retained or exited to permanent housing. This is the Homeyard Cotages Program under Transitions and they again, met all of their metrics. Overall, PSH did well in meeting their metrics. No returns in the program at all. Now, this is all of the Volunteers of America Permanent Supportive Housing Projects, all rolled up into one. So, 203 households served and 174 of them either stayed in the units or left the units to a permanent destination. We did see over 50% increase for both those who stayed in the program and those who left the program in their income. These are our Supportive Services Programs. So, they're standalone Supportive Services Program. One of them will be Women's Health and the other one will be under Family Promise. So, 308 clients served and 20 of them went to permanent housing at the end of the program. This is the Family Promise Children and Families Support Services Program. 88 clients served and then four of them went into permanent housing once they left the program. Oh, there it is. Okay. This is the Women's Health Program under Transitions. Now, this is for the clients that they're serving that are already housed. Their street outreach is for those that are not housed. This SSO program is for those that are. And their goal is to maintain the clients in their housing program. So, 220 clients served and 16 of those exited to permanent housing at the end.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Councilwoman Kacart?
Yeah, I've got a ton. I mean, we'd be here for two more hours, but I'll just ask this. So, we started with 10,000 folks that were either at risk of eviction or homeless. Where do we end up after all this? What is that number that's remaining?
You're saying the total number that went to permanent housing at the end?
No, you guys said we started with a pool of 10,000 people that were touched throughout all of this. So, we started with 10,000. When you count up how many exited homelessness, we'll call it exiting to permanent housing, just to be very, very clear on what exiting means, how many are no longer homeless of that 10,000? How many can we reduce from that number? And then how many of the, what percentage of those were at risk of eviction and how many of those did we prevent from falling into eviction? That's kind of what I want to see. What is that pool shrunk down to?
Sorry, I just want to make sure we're understanding. You're asking of those, at the beginning point of this data, if we made the entire thing static and no one joined the system, how many people are left in it?
No, at the very beginning, you said that this whole thing was encompassing of 10,000 and some number of touches, right? And you said that that was made up of individuals who are either homeless now or at risk of eviction. So, you just went through all this data talking about 58 people exited homeless, exited to permanent housing here, 100 people here, 20 people here. So, if you add up in the aggregate, what is that, what's the pool shrunk down to from 10,000?
So, we can, we can tell you, I mean, Amanda and her team, unless I'm wrong, can tabulate the system-wide exits. That's kind of what that longitudinal systems analysis does that we shared a few months ago with you all. That being said, that 10,000 number, right, it was when the data, we're looking from the date of the data we're starting to evaluate and people continue to inflow into the system during that time. So, if we just said between these dates, how many of the 10,000 are left? It's, it's a, it's not a static target, but we could look at from the point at which we started this data, what were the total system-wide exits? And we would pull that from our LSA and get that to you.
And I think that's fair, but we are also, you know, in the more comprehensive sense, talking about literally reducing the number of individuals who are experiencing homelessness. And so, I understand that there's folks being added, but I guess you just got to calculate that into the overall and say, are we exiting enough that it is shrinking that overall pool even with the additions?
And that's part of what the LSA report looks at. It just, in our project-based reports, we're not tabulating system-wide data the same. So, we can pull that from the internal data and share that with you. It's just not reflected in the by-project totals at the end. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman McClitkey?
So, to try and understand the data more, is this 10,000 touches we're talking about? Are those all separate individuals or are those like holistic, like grouping of all of these programs together that may be sometimes the same person?
That is a great question. And so, when we do that 10,000 number, we do dedupe across all of our programs. So, someone could have been staying in shelter and then maybe they were pulled for rapid rehousing from coordinated entry. So, we do make it so they only count once. Now, the only bit where it gets really tricky for us to dedupe is with anonymous clients. Dedupe, I mean removing those who are duplicates, right? We don't always know who those anonymous clients are. We do keep some, you know, records if we're the ones that are asked to dedupe. For this very purpose is to find out if we have a duplicate of a client, but if the organization entered the client as anonymous, we have no idea. So, a client could be as anonymous in one program and not in another. Now, we are constantly cleaning that up. We do get issues and merge requests all of the time, but it is expected that you have some level of duplication within your anonymous clients, which do make up a portion of that 10,000.
Another question, Councilwoman McClitkey?
I don't want to rapid fire if we're taking turns right now.
Well, I'll just ask one. Under each of those categories, and I have to echo Councilmember Lamden, it would be beneficial to me to see how much, how much money had been allocated during that window of time to each program to help us get a, get a better sense of efficacy in the work. So, if we had given you $6 million and only six people were assisted, then is that the best resource? So, that's what I'm just trying to understand. So, if you would give that to us, that'd be helpful for me.
Can I add on to that real fast?
Yes, now to the Councilman Lamden.
Also, the cost per, right? So, what is the cost per exit to permanent? The cost per exit to temporary? What is that cost per, I think is crucial to knowing where we should invest going forward?
Councilman Lamden, oh.
Thank you. To your question, Council President Wilkerson and Lamden as well. So, when we do our quarterly performance metrics, we do put spend down inside of them. We just sort of pulled the information out in a PowerPoint for you so it was sort of simpler, but on the ones that we will post on our website, it is included in the QPRs and you can see program by program who had funds left over, who actually didn't spend everything that we allocated to them. So, we do include it as well. So, you're, it will be in there and then that. Yes. And then to- As well, so you're, it will be in there. And then that, yes. And then to Councilmember Cathcart's question, the cost per, we don't typically calculate that. Now, there is a report that the Department of Commerce does. They call it the Golden Report or the Annual Report or Annual Expenditure Report. That does give a cost per client and it does it at a state level, not just for our county, but every single one. We actually just finished all of that expenditure report to send it out to the state. It is linked on their website. They do have historical records of those as well, if you're interested.
Well, it's great to compare our numbers too, but that doesn't really help us know what programs are working at the most cost-effective method.
Well, I think just for what it's worth, and I apologize for something up here over and over, but I mean, anecdotally, we do have internal cost per client data in the context of like within a program. What's harder for us to capture, to Amanda's point earlier, is that if somebody goes from street outreach to house of charity to PSH, and then we're, and then what, and then the question is, how much did it take to move that one person from the street through each of those interventions? That's where it gets more difficult for us to calculate because it is a, how long were you in that program? How many times did you touch that program? But in terms of, you know, what's the, the per bed night cost? Those are things that we do talk about internally. We've been talking with providers about that, especially at the emergency shelter level and how we get those closer to kind of an average cost. But the, from the street to permanent housing is where it's tougher because it is a, there's a duration of time with each service provider. How many times were they engaged? Where it gets a little bit more difficult to accurately calculate. We could certainly do our best on some of those as an average point, but at a really myopic individual level, it, it's a difficult one for us to, to get to.
Go ahead, Councilman Lambden.
Yeah, so I think another question or potential area of opportunity, I guess, to understanding, I think kind of to Dawn's point, that every individual going through this system, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. But is there a way that we can look at, because what I'm seeing with each of those program overviews is that there's specific populations that are proving to have more success in programs than others. So are there areas within those programs, whether it's the population that's served or the work in services that are being provided within that individual program, that we can pull out to say, an investment in this type of intervention or funding and programming? And I know that that informs a lot of the RFPs too. So is there opportunity to kind of pull through some of those best practices so that we can understand what's working in those programs, that's not working in another program that's serving the exact same population, if that makes sense?
Yeah, so I think part of what, and I, sorry, I keep using the same acronym, but the longitudinal systems analysis that we presented, I think, late last spring, that is a very clear indicator of where the most effective interventions are, right? It's transitional housing, it's rapid rehousing. Those are also, from a TH in particular, we know it's anecdotally more expensive, it's far more wraparound, it's longer term. So we do know from an intervention perspective, what tends to be most effective and what tends to be most expensive. What's more challenging is around subpopulation because frequently that is not, it can be a indication of funding needed. It can also be an indication of just the acuity of the population. So you see every time we do this, right? The family system moves people through at a pretty rapid rate. Those individuals tend to be, not in all cases, but tend to be more stable. They have more opportunities to earn income. They've got additional supports from places like school districts and they are able to often stabilize faster. What's harder is within particularly the single-serving system and differences between those particular project outcomes. And what we see typically among singles is there's not a huge variation, but for the scale of a project. So if we compared, you know, track to the navigation center, we can see that an over, an over-volume of people in need and an under-investment in people serving them does not equate to good outcomes. But scale seems to be the primary indicator within that subpopulation. Around DV and families in particular, there's clear indications on those things and by intervention, we know. We could look at it from that perspective too. I think part of what's tough about this, this particular data is that it is by project. And when we look at the LSA data, it is by intervention. And so we get a far clearer picture to, to many of these questions because they are then saying, from an intervention perspective, not a by-provider perspective, where are we seeing the most effective outcomes, both in terms of cost and in terms of permanent placement out of the system? And we could do an additional follow-up on the LSA. Obviously, you were not on council when we did that, but there is good data in there that we can bring back and include, you know, portions of that as we do the QPRs so that touch point to the system data is present for you guys.
Thank you. Any, Councilor McClitkey?
I have kind of a holistic question here. I think these presentations aren't just for us to understand the programs, but also for the larger community. And we, we need the data to meaningfully tell us a story about how, how, how we're making progress, kind of a double bottom line. Yes, we want to see what the return on investment is on different interventions, but as Dawn said, some of these problems are more acute and they just inherently need more investment. But we're talking about this like ecosystem of 10,000 plus people. It's a super scary number for the public to digest, to imagine that that many people are struggling with severe housing insecurity. And if the number stays fairly constant at 10,000, even if we're moving people through the system, I think it's hard for people to understand how these projects are making a difference. And how are we telling the story of if there's kind of an ongoing 10,000 people in the system, how many people are we diverting? Like how bad would it be if we didn't have this system? That's kind of the story that we need to tell. And this is more of a feedback comment. So I don't really expect an answer today. But I think that we need to try to calibrate our metrics, not just with a return on investment type of mindset, because we know different inventions, interventions are more complicated. And obviously, like permanent supportive housing, most of those programs were meeting all of their metrics. But some of the programs were meeting very few of the metrics. So it's very easy for me as a policymaker to look at those programs and say, well, should we keep those programs? But I think what's missing from the way we explain this data is there's kind of a level of at the street, which is going to take a ton more intervention to get them up to permanent supportive housing. I feel like that's the story we're losing when we talk about the data this way. I'm not saying we shouldn't talk about the data this way, but it's kind of terrifying to sit here and think that a lot of those programs are making zero out of five or zero out of three, meeting their metrics. What do we do with that information? We're not going to get rid of those programs. So this, this data needs to tell a more accurate story of how we're moving the needle. Because I think what Councilmember Cathcart is getting at is, are we moving the needle? If we're just looking at the numbers, it doesn't really tell us.
I completely agree. And we've had internal, we've had similar conversations on the administration side about how do we tell the story with the data as opposed to just present the data? And it's, we have struggled to get our hands around that. There are some good, you know, videos that we have made that are showing individual people's stories through the system and how it functions. I think a couple of quick things, and I know that was feedback that we'll continue to digest, but I think one thing we could start showing along with some of this data is, is also the, the investments in affordable housing that are made. I think there's a, to your point, Councilmember Cathcart, which is totally fair. I think part of our challenge is that this system is, is not the end of where somebody goes to get housed. And so we, we can show the, the reduction in individuals served, to your point. And the hard part is that we are not in control of where they, of what the, the housing stock looks like next in many cases. And so if we're able to show, you know, what, what does this look like compared to the investments we've made in affordable housing to bring new units online? What does this look like in comparison to what the housing authority is doing with vouchers to try and show those additional exits that we're not tracking anymore, but we know individuals are continuing to access? It kind of helps demonstrate where the, where the 10,000 people are going if they're not still reflected in this system. And also helps highlight that, that some of the gap is not in this bucket. Much of the gap is in affordable housing. If we had affordable housing that was available to individuals to move into, we would see a much faster pace of individuals moving through this system. So we are backlogged up against the ability for somebody to exit a unit and move into a market rate, an affordable unit, whatever it is, that is not funded by these dollars and that is not reflected in this data. Saying that is, that is part of the challenge and very imperative to what you're pointing out, which is accurate, that we, but that's, that is part of the challenge, right? If affordable housing was not at a crisis point, we would be seeing folks move through the system at a much faster pace. And we could bring at least the investments that the city is making in affordable housing to try and juxtapose what we're seeing inflow or exit from the system in itself. And you had made one comment at the end that I forgot that I had a response for, but I will follow up with you if I think of it.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for, for all this work and sharing this data. And I think along the lines of, I think, public education is the long-term savings with these services too. When we're talking about the cost of emergency rooms, jail, you name it, and how a lot of the stabilization and transition will cut the cost in half for an individual receiving these services. So I remember when I first got here, you know, one of the effective arguments for transitioning out of track was here's the cost per person for what you're putting in versus scatter site, right? But I think that also helps the public understand that story about how a lot of these investments do create longer-term savings for people in Spokane and do have effective outcomes.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah. And the other piece too, I think would be really helpful as we look at this data is to not just look at the exits to, to permanent or, or housing in general, but also what are the other interventions that have been utilized? So for example, there was one, I think the only one that I saw that was really treatment-oriented, it was the CAT, but the only data we had was exits. Why did we not have data on how many were in active recovery? How many had, you know, essentially kicked the addiction, so to speak, and were on a pathway to a better outcome, even if they hadn't yet achieved housing or whatever that next step is? The other, and I bring this up every single time, is employment. Surely, we are employing people through these programs. And I know there's a bunch of data points up there that combine, which I thought was weird, combined private employment dollars with, I assume, public assistance dollars and called it income. But could we parse that out and really show what is the improvement on an individual, average individual level of gainful employment? Because that is obviously one of the most important and key factors in exiting homelessness is employment. And so to know how many we've, we've helped get jobs through these programs would be really important to see.
So I think, so, and we can have a follow-up conversation on this. We, in no way is this the totality of the data within HMIS, right? So yes, we have data around employment. We are required by funding partners to include income growth as the indicator there, which is why you see it that way. And for a lot of these people, we're not talking about, you know, SNAP benefits. We're talking about things like SSDI for somebody who's got a long-term disability and has not had the support needed to get through the application process, which is critical in terms of housing stability. So some of that, yes, there is public income there, but it is, much of it is things like SSDI. We could parse that out. We could look differently at the way we present data to you all. So I think too, I mean, we, we know that this is an extreme amount of information and it isn't a quarterly basis as well. If there's particular things that you would prefer to see us present on, then simply what's in our performance management plan, which is what we've been doing, we could do that. I think part of it is just, you know, let us know what to remove because we know we take up a lot of your time. And then also, we can have one-off conversations with folks to that end. But we, we do that and we absolutely have agencies focused on employment. Most of our agencies lean pretty heavily into the FCS program, which is a state billable program, but it's a lot to do with employment. So we have a lot of that data either internally or with our partner agencies. We may just need to shift instead of presenting purely on the performance management plan to council to include some additional data points that are not in that plan, but are certainly in the system.
I would just encourage, you know, this plus. I mean, honestly, I would rather do a three-hour meeting, and it's not just for my benefit, but the public's as well, to really, truly go through in the weeds on, on all these data points.
Yeah, I'll follow up with legislative aides and see what other points people would like to see added, and then we can do that in the future.
I'm going to take Councilmember Lambden, then I'm going to transition to the mayor's emergency ordinance and get the information on that. Councilman Lambden?
Yeah, just really quick, piggybacking on Councilmember Cathcart, something that I've seen done in healthcare before that's really helpful, that kind of gets at all the points I think we're all talking about right now, talking about the human side of things, for the public to have an education around what's actually happening with these individuals. And then the financial side is taking almost like a, a case study of a few different individuals through the system. So someone who has like really complicated entering from street homelessness and moving through the system. What's the cost for that individual who's touching multiple of those programs versus a family unit that their path to permanent housing is a little more straightforward than that individual, just to give that context around the cost and the dynamic nature of the individuals going through these programs.
Yeah, and that's, that's totally doable. And we've done case studies like that in the past, but probably never in front of council.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for answering our questions. I'm sure there's more to come. So I'm going to kick it over to Dawn to walk us through the mayor's emergency.
Does this work, Jacoby?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we just have three, three slides for you all today with what we've identified thus far since yesterday's announcement. Real quick, we did finally get together a slide on what the new outreach system is looking like. I know we've presented to you both from 311 and code, and you've had conversations with SPD as well about how we are building out this coordinated system. And Jacoby can share these slides. I know this is a law on one slide. But the idea here behind this coordinated outreach program is to really build in an integrated partnership between coordinated street outreach, the daytime navigation center, the SPD level, and then the, the exit or potential exit to scattered site shelters, all by utilizing the, the intake at 311 for the citizen to report and issue. So what we have spent the summer doing is building out our 311 system, as Heather Sweet presented to you all earlier this week, where an individual can go and place a complaint on the 311 website 24/7 or by phone during business hours. That complaint, if it's encampment or, you know, individual in distress related, is routed directly to our outreach team, who now has the 311 mobile app on their phone with a worker queue outlined by precinct. So they open that queue every morning. It gives them the list of all the reports that were received. And then they're being responsive initially to those complaints that have come through the 311 system. If outreach determines an initial engagement or some kind of other known piece of information that an SPD response is critical, they immediately reach out to those precincts for that support. Otherwise, they move through the outreach system where they make contact, identify whether or not individuals are interested in engaging in services or not. That may take one to three times, depending on who the individual is that they're engaging with and where. Once that is understood, they're moving that encampment over to code enforcement if abatement is needed, all in the 311 app. So then 311, or excuse me, code enforcement has a matching queue that identifies which camps are ready for their response. And then they're able to check them off after individuals have been either moved into services or they've had engagement with a SPD because they're not interested in services at that point. Once that's through, the daytime navigation center is obviously where a lot of individuals are being received through this effort. And the daytime navigation center is then playing that critical role in helping individuals either find, you know, permanent housing, shelter for the evening, a ride back to, you know, a friend or family's home, whatever the solution may be. In this case, currently, obviously, a lot of that is being done in coordination with scattered sites. But certainly, they are reaching out to any of our providers in the system at the point that somebody is ready for a housing option. Are there questions about this? We, I mean, this, we are super excited about this. And the queues that have been built out have been very effective in the teams being able to move quickly. The other thing we did indicate within the queue, just so that you all know, is the ability for us to deem any site priority based on location or safety concern, so that the outreach teams or code enforcement can be immediately notified if there's a specific location that needs to not be waited until it's their turn in line.
Councilman Cathcart?
Yeah, and that was later my question, you know, under 1009C, the priority piece, how do we do that? Because if it's waiting on the coordinated outreach, then it's really not necessarily expedited method. So what, what's the process going to look like there?
So there is the ability within the app for it to be deemed a priority site. There's also a standing list of sites that we've worked with SPD to create that we know are just ongoing hotspots where the teams are making regular stops, whether or not they fall into the queue. And then Jason's team is still out there identifying spots that they're saying, oh no, this is a priority, we're just handling it right now. Some of that's based on additional community feedback we get that's outside of the 311 system, but most of that is based on just operational knowledge of outreach code and PD about where there's just a natural place we need to be spending more time, regardless of what the queue is asking of us.
So Dawn, I'm going to ask you just for the public's interest, 311 system, what are the hours? And if it's after hours, then how do they connect with that system?
Yep. So you can file a report on the 311 website 24/7. Those, regardless of the business hour, those reports are still funneled directly into an outreach person's queue. If you want to talk to somebody on the phone, you can call 311 during business hours, which I believe are eight to six. But the online reporting is 24/7 and it will still go straight through into an outreach queue, even if it's 2:00 AM or 4:00 AM or any hour.
Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's seven to six. I'm curious where 211 kind of falls into this and maybe help folks understand where those calls are.
Yeah, so 211, which is our kind of a statewide behavioral health support network. Certainly, our outreach team connects people to 211 when necessary. And I know 311 will also, if 311's receiving a phone call complaint, and it seems more appropriate for 211, 311 will manage that transition for an individual. And the outreach team is, is well-equipped at identifying, do we need to call the BHU, the BRU, additional street outreach, that's, you know, medically or behavioral health-focused from Frontier or CHAZ, or 211 when needed. But they are, they are distinctly separate, but 311 could help somebody make that determination if it's a better fit for 211. Okay. So the next slide is going to go over where, what we are looking at in terms of shelter beds.
shelter beds and expanded treatment services, based on the emergency declaration yesterday. There are two different categories on here under the shelters. I apologize, I know this table is kind of funky, we're, we're moving quick. But the top three locations are confirmed locations. Below that, you'll see in discussion or potential, which is two additional shelter sites that are not confirmed, that we are actively working with providers to try and secure beds at. And then on the far right, you'll see the estimated contract value that we anticipate putting out. So the first one is adding four additional beds at the CAT Recovery Shelter. We see very consistent high utilization there. So we'll be adding four, four beds there, that takes them to 29 beds at the end of it, so it's still not going above that 30. Working with the YWCA to add additional beds for families fleeing domestic violence, that is presented in a stays number because of the way that they operate and the fact that it's families. So it could be a family of three, it could be a family of five, they're not going to say, no, it's not a static bed count, but this dollar value equates to 350 stays. They base that number off of serving an anticipated 50 number of families for about seven days apiece throughout the course of that time. And then the revive beds are at, current revive sites that they've been operating since, really, the inception of the Encampment Resolution Program. They can add 20 individuals to their, 20 beds to those locations currently without taking any site over 30. For CAT and revive, the average cost per bed per night is about $67. The YWCA is about $109 per household per night. Below that, there's two additional sites that are in discussion. One, I'll start at the bottom, is adding five additional beds at the Way Out Shelter with Salvation Army. And Ariel's been coordinating with them to see if that is possible. And then the other one is the potential for an additional scatter site at a church in Perry that would provide 15 beds, that we believe we could open rather quickly, but we are waiting on some final negotiations there before listing that as a confirmed thing.
Dawn, what is the length of these contracts that we're looking at? They start from when to when?
So our intent is to do a 12-month contract. The reason for that being that we cannot ask providers to add beds and staff and locations for three months. They're not going to do it. It's unfair to their staff, and it's unfair to the people they're serving. We need to get through one winter. We also need to get to the RFP cycle in 2026 so that agencies can compete for these funds to be ongoing. I am not comfortable asking a provider to hire staff and open locations for a temporary basis. It's, it's, it's not a best practice.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Cathcart?
So I guess, does that mean that the intention is for this declaration to last for 12 months?
No, no. Our intent is for this declaration to last long enough for us to simply execute contracts that would last that 12 months, and then have the, the declaration end way, way in advance. I think the proposed date on the declaration currently is in December.
So I, I'm a little confused, and this might be a better question for, for Jason, but in procurement, but he literally just told us the other day that essentially, there's no definition of market conditions, we can make it up, and we can bypass RFP. So why do we need a declaration just to bypass this when we have that other mechanism?
My understanding is that council has not been comfortable with market rate justifications.
It's never been brought to us until just now. And I'll agree, I'm not, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so I think that's, I mean, that has not been a successful pathway for us, and this is truly an emergency in our mind, which is why we're making this decision.
Well, an emergency in the short term, but for 12 months, I mean, that, if it's like a 30-day or something, I can understand, but to make a 12-month agreement when we don't really know the lay of the land that far out, that's where I'm having some consternation.
And, and that's fair. I think our concern is that we, we are familiar with the lay of the land, we know that there's an issue around beds and access to treatment services. We've been talking about that for the entire 24 months or so we've been in office. And we also know that our providers are stretched incredibly thin with a limited workforce, and we cannot continuously ask them to do more for 30, 60, 90 days. It's, it's not fair to them, and it's not reliable for individuals that are serving. Part of our challenge, and why we've pivoted on inclement weather a little bit, is that standing up new sites and then shutting them down is also incredibly confusing for the folks we're serving, to be able to actually know where they can go and count on services being available. Our intent here is not to say this is in perpetuity, but to give agencies enough time to get through our upcoming competitive rounds, so they can compete fairly and get awarded via that process, should they be selected, but not to cut them off in the middle of that when they're then laying off staff, they just hired, dislocating individuals, they just started serving.
Last question on that, and I do have to run to Board of Health, but the RFPs, you said, will go out in the spring. I know, like, for 1590, for example, the request is council passes a resolution in March, so presumably the RFP will be sometime after that. When do we expect, based on those timelines, that we would have final agreements? Is it August?
Oh, no, no, because, I mean, and if you look at the RFP, you'll be hearing the recommendations of the most recent 1590 services RFP here shortly, that was open over the summer. I mean, our, we are required to open those RFPs for at least 60 days. We have to give the RFP committee, and staff have to do initial threshold review, the RFP committee then has to score those reviews, then has to get through the CHHS board, which can add up to a month, and then it has to get through council process, which adds up at least a month. So for us to facilitate an RFP and get all the way to the point of contract, it literally takes eight to 12 months. I mean, it's an incredibly long process for us to get through, which is part of why we need to have time for agencies to actually be operational. We have, we have in times, you know, pushed items faster and further, but it, you know, frankly, dilutes the competitive process, takes away from public process, takes away from your time, the board's time, the staff time, to actually make sure this is the right thing. I would say, you know, one thing we're looking at, too, and you saw the data earlier, we did this, I believe, twice in 2025, where we are seeing low-performing projects, and to Councilmember Klitschke's point, we are then reallocating funds to higher-performing projects based on that performance. So we also know that things shift through the year based on that, and we anticipate doing more of that in 2026.
Well, last comment, I apologize if I could just say this. I, I know you guys do that, I know you can do that, but it really frustrates me that, you know, we take a, a very specific vote to allocate money a specific way, and I just wish the process was to come back to council, explain to us if something isn't working, and ask us to, to change the allocation, not just do it kind of administratively. Because I think, you know, if, if our buy-in's needed at the front end, then it should be needed for changes that are made midway as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dawn.
So the next piece on here is around the expanded treatment access, which you heard the mayor speak to yesterday. Our proposal here is to work with CAT. They, several months ago, purchased a, a van to be able to do mobile mass services. At the time, there was a state award that was allowing them to activate that program. The Healthcare Authority clawed that contract back statewide, they just canceled it across the entire state based on funding changes at the state level. But CAT is able to activate that for us, and what we have worked in partnership with them to achieve is the ability for that mobile unit, which can both connect people immediately to Suboxone or Treatment Services, conduct assessments, but also give them a ride, either back to CAT to enroll in outpatient services or to the Navigation Center, obviously. And that would be a number that we would allow SPD, the outreach team, and the Navigation Center to use to connect people in real time with to access to care. They need $200,000 for that, for a 12-month contract, which is an incredible service, in my opinion, and gives us some pretty, the ability for an officer to literally say, I've got someone here who's willing to accept treatment, and then there's a phone number they can call, and a van would be able to come and either move that individual or give them the, the temporary bridge information they needed to stay, to stay successful in recovery. And then the funds that we would be using for all of these contracts is a combination of heart funds, there's a state project called the Emergency Housing Fund via Commerce that we receive, and then local human services grant funds. And then this last slide here, this is our eviction prevention. So this is a little bit unique. This RFP did run over the summer, it closed in September. Our CHHS RFP committee met last night to make funding recommendations. So these were fully competed for contracts that the RFP committee has evaluated and made recommendations on. We will still have them heard by the CHHS board next week and then brief council at the November 10 Urban Experience Meeting, but we intend to move immediately to contract to help stop any prevention, eviction and provide that homeless prevention work. We put out the total there, that just over 2.9 million. Again, this is all state pass-through funds, and these were the applications that last night the CHHS RFP board recommended for funding. We can provide you, as we always do, with the full list of applicants and, and additional information, but these were the applications recommended to move forward.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lambden?
For the additional beds at the YWCA, is there a plan to have a mechanism, knowing